Welcome, everyone. I call the Craven County Board of Commissioners Special Meeting Friday, April 26. I'll remind everybody if you'd please turn off all electronics or put them on vibrate or noise, sorry, please. That's Kirk Rokoff.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Here.
Chairman Lyne.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, our only agenda we're going to be discussing this morning is the curbside recycling discussion, and we're going to turn that over to leadership and manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, let me, I want to start with addressing an issue first, if you don't mind. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the way this was announced. Certainly, it was never our intention to pick Earth Day as the day to announce this. It wasn't meant as intimidation or a slight to people who enjoy Earth Day or environmental issues. The reasoning was, we had everything together on Thursday, but one piece of information. We were really close to getting the press release out, but because we were closed on Friday and it being a holiday weekend with eastern people in our town, we didn't want to put that out and then leave and not be able to answer the citizens' questions. We made the decision on Thursday to release it on Monday and didn't think a thing about it until it was released. But by no means was it meant to cause any type of joke or prank or anything like that. That was never our intent. And I'm sorry that reflected on the commissioners poorly. That is a staff issue, so I wanted to address that. Mr. Holton, if you'll get us kind of kicked off here. All right, so let's just walk through currently what's on the table for the commissioners to consider. Back on April 15th, this was a regular agenda item that you considered and made a decision on. At that time, our current contract is set up where it's $2.92 per month per household. There's roughly $44,000 and some change households in Craven County. That equals $35.04 per year. The bill price, which has been the bill price since the origination of the program in the '90s, is $36. That's on the taxpayers' bills. It is the same for every household in Craven County, with the exception of approximately 1,600 homes involved in our elderly and veteran-disabled program, which I'm going to talk about in just a few minutes. That service is, frequency is weekly. It is curbside, and it's in an 18-gallon green box. Those green boxes have been, again, we've used since the beginning of the program. When we went out for an RFP this spring, we asked for it to be bid two different ways. One of them was the current program, and the second, which is Proposal 2 on the screen, is a bi-weekly with a 64-gallon, a larger wheeled container. As you can see, the prices came back exactly the same. It was $6 per month, $72 per year. The bill price would need to be somewhere between 74 and 78. We'll get into that in just a little bit, how that varies. Again, weekly or bi-weekly, 18-gallon versus 64-gallon. Once the prices came in, we realized that the pricing was going to more than double or right at double this program. We worked with our vendor Waste Industries, who's in the audience on the third row right in front of me, and they offered Proposal 3, which is $4.60 per month, roughly $55.20 price per year. Bill price would need to be somewhere between 57 and 60. That would be a monthly frequency, so it'd be one time a month, and it would go all the way up to a 95-gallon container, which is equal to a typical trash container that they provide for solid waste, if you have their subscription service or municipal service. So that was offered to the board on 4/15. There was discussion about those three options. Obviously, the board made a decision to cease operations on June 28. Since that time, knowing that we were having this meeting, we worked with Waste Industries to try to redefine the price, come to a sort of a final negotiation point, and we did that on 4/24, which was Wednesday, and they have agreed to $4.50 per month, which brings it down to $54 a year. Again, bill price per year would be $56 to $60, same monthly service, same 95-gallon One of the largest questions that we always get challenged with is what exactly is recyclable in Craven County? And this would be what has been recyclable and what will be recyclable moving forward: clear, green, and brown glass, newspaper, corrugated cardboard, of course, cut down to a manageable size, number-one plastics, number-two plastics, rigid plastic bottles, of course, not anything that's had a harmful chemical or oil or anything that would make meaning it would be contaminated, steel cans and aluminum cans. Any other products that are not mentioned in this list are not recyclable curbside. We do take mixed paper at our convenience sites and have through the history of this program, but not curbside. Oh, gosh. Sorry about that. We wanted just to quickly kind of review the routes. This is mainly information-only. We run it on a five-day schedule, Monday through Friday, starts around 7:00, ends when they're finished. And I'm just going to go through rather quickly so you can kind of just take a mental note for each day. Monday, western part, New Bern. Tuesday, far western part, Stan and New Bern, Trent Woods, River Bend. Wednesday, continuing in the James City communities and down Highway 70, also Commissioner Mark Ketch at Fairfield Harbor and Brauk Creek Road area, St. Elites Road. Thursday would be what we call the Grantham community on down to around Carolina Pines, northern part of New Bern, Commissioner Jones around Greenbrier, areas like that. And then finally, our Friday pickup is far eastern Craven County, Havelock, and then areas of high density around New Bern and James City. So to give you some sort of historical benchmarks for how this program's evolved over the last four years, we go back to 2015, and what's important here is to start understanding how the households change, how the fee changes, and what causes those things to happen. So in 2015, we had approximately 42,802 households on the regular program, full-fee household, that's $36 a year. On the discounted fee household, which is a discount is 100% military-related disabled veteran, no age requirement, or a person 65 years or older with an income less than $30,200. This program was set up back in the '90s when the county decided to move forward with curbside recycling. Has not changed. It has consistently been $36 for the full and $12 for the partial. That discount program closely mirrors, I think Ronnie Antry's here, does he see Ronnie come in? There's Mr. Antry. Closely mirrors the state program for taxes, Ronnie, and I'm not sure of the proper verbiage for that, but there's a tax rebate program for folks who qualify under these terms. So when we come down, we have a contract with Waste Industries. I'm still following the 2015. The full-fee household that was billed out from the county was $1.54 million and about $16,620 on the discounted fee for a total revenue of $1,557,492. The contract with Waste Industries was $1,463,473 for a net to the recycling operation of $94,019. What that net to the recycling operation means is it covers the administrative overhead of the program, along with the hauls that we have from the recycling containers at the convenience sites. We maintain seven convenience sites. Folks are free to use those, along with the curbside program, and of course, there's a cost with that. What Mr. Hodges did, of course Gene made this chart, is he then averaged out, because our contract with Waste Industries is based on a CPI taken in January. Over that period of time, it was about 1.28% per year. So the price varies per household per year that we pay, while the fee remains the same that we charge. So as you go to 2018, which is the current year that we're in, you saw those households moving up, paying the full to about $43,314, and the discounted rose at actually a higher percentage to about 1,621. Our total count this year is 44,935. That's what we pick up curbside countywide. Again, the revenue that we bill on the tax rate, $1.578 million, and the recycling contract amount of Waste Industries, $1,572.725, but you see that net to recycling operation has shrunk. That's for two reasons. One, the CPI has been adjusted all throughout the contract, and that's the way it should work. By year five of your contract, you should be very close with the CPI to what you're paying, to what you're billing. Second is, those households that have the discounted fee grew. So you're paying more of a subsidy on those accounts than you did back in 2015. Let me just stop there. Is there any questions on those first couple of slides that I can answer?
Board, any questions?
Okay, because I'm going to jump right into where kind of the new fees would relate. And I'm sorry, this is so small, but there's a lot of data that we want to look at here, and I'm going to walk you through it, and I'm going to ask Gene to help fill in the blanks. So basically, what this now does is it takes you through a five-year projected contract, if you were to choose to have that with Waste Industries, based on the new fees, basing it on the monthly pickup at the lowest price, which was the $4.50 a month, and then at the weekly or bi-weekly, which is roughly the 72 that was bid. If you want to maintain the program in the manner that we have over the last 25 years, which is a static fee, meaning you set the fee that covers the five years of the contract. To do that, on the monthly pickup, we would need to go to $60 for the regular customers and $30 for the discounted fee. And that takes you, so you're clear, all the way into year five, and you can see that net to recycling operations, how it shrinks each year. So in year five, you're down to $38,000, which is compensating for the pools at the convenience centers and the administrative overhead. I take it down and look at either the weekly or bi-weekly, which is more like the service you have now, it's 78.39. And again, you trace that out over five years. Gene's using the average CPI of the last five years, obviously that can change, and he's using a growth factor when he averaged those years before, and we're placing that in each year. So again, on that, you're about $38,033 in the last year with those fees. So you can see they're pretty much in line when you get to year five. That's one way to look at it. There's always a different way to skin a cat. So we're proposing a new way of looking at it, something called a flow duty, which means instead of setting the fee one time and holding it for five years, you would actually set it each year with the budget. So you would look at those costs that can be projected, and you would set the fee to exactly cover those charges. So for instance, in this case, and if we're looking at the monthly pickup at the $4.50, you would start at 56.28. That would be your benchmark based on the bid we've received. Based on those projected growth rates and CPI, it would go to 57.29, 58.29, and on out to where it matches your fixed fee or the static fee in year five, where it'd be 60.30, and that accounts for all the things. If you look at it on the weekly or bi-weekly, you start out at approximately a $74 fee and a $37 fee, and at the end, you get to the same point of 78.39. So what this would rely on would be, when you approve your budget each year, you would set this fee to meet the cost of the program. And as Gene noted, based on the last five years, that's a growth rate of .56 in households that are served by the program. I thought this was an interesting way to look at it. A lot of people have said, you know, well, I'm paying taxes for the recycling service. A lot of feedback is, you know, is in my tax bill. It's not. It's a separate fee. But to show you what it would mean to add this program into the tax fee, if you look at the once-a-month service, the $54 contract rate, if you applied that through the county issue taxes, it would result in a 2.6 cent increase this fiscal year. If you look at maintaining the current program at the $72 rate, that is a 3.4 cent tax increase. So just to show you that, it's not something the board's ever contemplated, but I think it's a good reference tool to show you, this program is very large. It's a, at the end of, you know, five years, this is a $3.5 million contract if you go with the weekly or bi-weekly service. Any questions on those two slides?
Board?
Thank you, sir. Okay. Want to talk a little bit about how much is collected? I mean, this is obviously a moving target. It's really based on consumer demand and based on the volume. You've got high months, you've got low months, you've got hurricane months in here, if anybody references September of 2018. But what this shows you is the, you know, roughly the tonnage that's collected each year. Fairly consistent, if you look at '15 and '16 and '16 and '17, little decline in '17, '18. Can't really tell you what causes that. It's just maybe less recycling out there. Of course, midway through the year, we're going to have a down year. Obviously, in September, it being closed, that's some tonnage that didn't make it to the MRF. So let me explain what happened in September. There were still recyclables, right? The MRF closed in Jacksonville because of the hurricane. It was damaged. They didn't accept any materials. So that stuff sat in people's homes until Waste Industries could get back up and running, start collecting material, because they have nowhere to keep it, Snowco's closed. I'm under that assumption norm. You might have to correct me later. That's where I'm going with it. So that's that. And then we wanted to kind of equate, you know, hypothetically, you know, you hear these concerns about folks, well, it's just going to go in the trash can. So we'll say, if it did, how much is going in the trash can? So we take the last 12 months of curbside recycling in tonnage and convert it to pounds. Simple to look at. Roughly 2,000 pounds in a ton. In the last 12 months, we have collected 12,518,940 pounds of recyclables, curbside, in Craven County. If you divide that by 44,935 households, that's 278.6 pounds per household that we've collected. If you want to equate that to someone who's on the sticker system, a non-municipal or a non-subscription customer, it's roughly 50 pounds of trash per sticker. That would be an additional 5.57 stickers, and the individual will need to buy $3 per trash sticker or $16.72 per year in additional costs. That's assuming they don't use the convenience sites at all, and everything in the recycled bin goes into a bag that's been recycled. So wanted to kind of show you how to look at this a couple of different ways. That's the presentation, sir. We've got staff from tax, solid waste, attorney, the vendor here, the contractor, and administration to answer any questions you have, and we'll just turn it back over to you.
Board, before we request a motion, I'd like to open up to the board for any questions, any comments, anything they want to throw out.
Well, I have some questions, Chair. In the beginning, I thought that the recycling bin that we presently have now was the one that we can use all the time, because if you use those, in a month time, that's a lot of trash. Because people have a tendency to cook them all during the summertime, down the run-of-time, and they get filled up quickly, and it's very hot. So I find out now that it's not the recycling basket that you're using now. Those would be discontinued, and they can use the 98?
95.
95-gallon container, which is high, you can pull them. Which is not that bad, but if you use the smaller ones, it's very bad, because otherwise when they get filled up, people can start finding garbage in the lakes, dirt roads, people's yards on the highway, and we do not want that. So that's one of the reasons why I feel not to vote for it. But since I understand now that since you have a big 95-gallon container to put your trash in, which you've got rollers on it, and you can carry it to the road, which is easier. And you said when or they could pick up in the hollow area? You didn't mention hollow.
I could tell you when they pick up now. The projected, if you, whatever decision you pick, will be a negotiation with Waste Industry and a process. We'll do our research and map it out together, and it'll certainly be a complicated process, but we think we can get it done.
Yeah, because we have to have a recycling pickup, because we don't, you can find a lot of trash in people's yards, all the outside of highways and the lakes, and it's not bringing everything up. So that's why I have, with the chair.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say that now, in New Bern, I have one of those containers that we were talking, we were speaking about, and we don't, I don't have any problem. I can pack mine down and take it out to the curb, and the only problem I might have is if one of the dogs go out there, and they empty your garbage can, that'll happen anywhere. But I don't have any problem with the pull-out cart that I have in New Bern. That's the same type of cart, so I can see we'd be accessible to almost anyone. My wife, she could pull that out there if she wanted to, but most times, if I'm there, I'll pull it out there. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question. Number one, I'd like to thank all of the citizens and voters who emailed in, called in to all of us with their perspective and their insights. That's the way the process is supposed to work, and it's how we know what's important to you. So thank you. And from those phone calls and emails is where my question comes from, and it is from Ms. Norma for Waste Industries.
Ms. Norma, would you mind coming up, please?
I have heard from several citizens that there is rumor that New Bern and Trent Woods are talking to Waste Industries about a joint program between the two municipalities and Waste Industries that would pick up recyclables from those two municipalities for a lower fee per month. Is that correct, or is that just a rumor?
According to the City of New Bern's board meeting that they had on Tuesday night, their public works director was instructed to put out RFPs for it. That's what that is. As far as Trent Woods, I do have a meeting on Monday with the mayor, but I have no clue on what he wants to talk about. I have met with, I have talked with Mr. Jackson from River Bend. He has no intentions of doing anything. If the county discontinues, whatever everybody wants to do on their own, he's going to do. So as far as what you're asking, I mean, we're here to help anybody who wants help, depending on what you guys decide, so. But as far as I know, and it's what I can tell you, the City of New Bern did instruct their staff to put it out for RFP. Now, I think part of the discussion was depending on what you guys do here today as well. And as far as Mr. Tyson, I have no clue on what he wants to talk about. I know recycling, but that's all his clerk business, is making appointment with me.
Thank you. That's exactly what I want to know, and I appreciate you clarifying.
If I may.
Sir. Yes.
To continue on that conversation, okay, let's say we as a board make a decision to go with whether it's weekly or to go monthly, and one of the municipalities decide they want to do something different. Does that change the price that has been quoted to this board or commissioners?
The way your RFP and your ordinance are written, no, it does not, because we knew that going into the RFP, that at some point in history, one of them could pull out according to your ordinance. Now, there is specifications in your ordinance on when they can pull out. You have to give notification and that kind of thing, but no, your price will not change. We stand by what we gave you. We knew that was, it's always been a possibility, so we stand by it.
If I also may ask, I ask this to our staff, and you probably don't have this number either, but I think it behooves me to ask it. Do you have the amounts that you pick up geographically in this county for recyclables? I mean, we see here for March, there was 570 collected, but if you had, I represent the rural and urban areas of this county, mostly rural. Do you have an idea of how much you pick up in the rural areas?
I did not look at that. I could probably get that back to you, because we measure everything every day. We have a route. At the end of the day, we know how many carts we pick, or how many stops we've made, and how much it weighed for that day. I just don't, do not know. Atypical, what you have to remember, there's not as many, there's not the density in a rural area, so we, even if we picked up a lot at one home or all the homes, at the end of the day, you still wouldn't have that.
You're not comparing apples to apples.
No, sir, you're not.
I understand that.
It's more economic, really, if you overlook at it. Atypically, retired neighborhoods pick out more weight per household. People with school kids pick up more weight by household, so.
All right. Just thank you, Ms. Chair.
Mr.?
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's an emotional issue. When we made our decision two weeks ago, I think most of us looked at a large piece of this puzzle was the cost that would be increasing and what that would do to people on fixed incomes. Several commissioners here expressed that they had a lot of people living in their district, that it would be a hardship to raise the price to this amount. So certainly, price was part of the issue. I tried to do my homework, and I've done a lot of study, some before and a lot since, and I found that, I found a really great article that people at home and people here may want to look up. It's called Yale, Yale University, Environment 360. Looks like this. It's online, obviously, and the title of the article says, "Piling Up: How China's Banned on Importing Waste Has Stalled Global Recycling." And it goes on in here to really give some startling facts that they've drawn. So to me, there's two issues here. One, we talk all about the cost, the cost, the cost, one month, once a month, once a week, et cetera. To me, a bigger issue is what's happening to this stuff once it is picked up. If this article is typical of us, they talk about diapers, hypodermic needles, all kinds of stuff going into these bins that obviously shouldn't, and then that's all got to be sorted out. And at the end of the day, about the only thing that really has any value is aluminum and metal. That's what this article concludes, and that most plastic is not being recycled. Almost a large, large percentage of the plastic that's being picked up is either being burned or going into landfills. So I have a hard time thinking that it makes sense to drive a truck over every mile of our county every week to pick up stuff that ends up going in the landfill, and then following that with another truck that's picking up the trash. So that's a statement, okay?
I was waiting for the question, yes.
So the question I have is, do you have any, if I were you, I wouldn't, but if you have any statistics on how much of the stuff in Craven County is going into landfills or being burned as opposed to what's actually being turned into new products? Excuse me. One other thing it stated is, most cardboard and paper can't be recycled because it's contaminated, because it goes into the truck, and the truck squashes, everything goes in together, and it gets liquid on it, and it makes it contaminated, so it can't be recycled. So I'm struggling with the idea of picking up stuff, charging people this fee, and then taking it to a landfill. So now my question.
I cannot speak for our processor, Snowco. Snowco, a large global company. They also manufacture Gaylord boxes and other kinds of packing and shipping containers. So their collection of cardboard and paper products, they have an in-use for, so it makes them a good partner in recycling. You're absolutely right about the metals. All I can tell you, I cannot speak for them on what their residue is, what their contamination is. All I can tell you is that if we keep it clean enough, it can be shipped to China. We, as a company, do not own any MRFs here in North Carolina. We do have a really large one in Colorado. We just spent $2.5 million on a secondary outfit for it. We have someone who sits in the plant all day long, checking the contamination values of it. We still ship to China from that MRF, and we have somebody sitting at the dock loading it on the ships to ensure that it's not contaminated before it goes over there. These things are turning around. I think there are more plants being built, and I know in Alabama and South Carolina, one's being built for plastic, one's being built for paper, and what they're going to be, it's like a third-party kind of thing, that a lot of this material is shipped to them. The Chinese are building them, and they'll ensure that they're the quality product before it goes overseas. But in the United States, they're upfitting plants and things like that. Don't get me wrong, I really think it's probably got as worse as it can be right now for recycling. But I've attended meetings with the state. I belong to Carolina Recycle Association, and I think Rusty was at the last meeting that I attended with the state and with Snowco, and they were very open and honest about it, that broken glass has to go out the back door, because there's only one place in North Carolina that can take it, and the contaminated other products do as well. Their insight is, they don't want people to get out of the habit of recycling, because they can do a lot of it, and it's looking up every day for being able to recycle more of the product. And that's all I can tell. Like I said, I'm not here in North Carolina. We do not own the processor, Snowco. But I can tell you this, across North Carolina too as well, the processes are getting limited. The state is doing some report on how there's not enough processes for all the material that's being picked up. So the fact that here in eastern North Carolina, we have Snowco, is a good thing. People look, especially being a destination for people that are retirement, and the only reason I can say this, because I do this all over several states, they look at the recycling option as a service that they expect to have when they get to a destination like this. And I've had other cities that have started programs, trying to boost their image to get more people to move and relocate to the areas. Having said that, whatever y'all decide, we'll work around and do whatever. decide, we'll work around and do whatever you want. I'm just giving my opinion at this point.
I would also say for the public's information, that this article says that on December 31st, 2017, China put a ban, and I didn't know this, but they were taking, it calls it trash here, from England, Australia, many other countries, they shut them all off.
That's correct.
And it says, lesson, says even before the ban, only 9% of discarded plastic was recycled. Before the ban, 9%. Now, I don't know where they get these numbers.
In China, you mean? China was only recycling at 9%?
Yeah. And the other thing that people may not know is that a lot of plastic that goes into the bins can't be recycled, because it's the wrong kind of plastic. And I didn't understand that all, that point all, either. In other words, there's many different types of plastic, and different codes, and so on, on the bottom.
Well, we deal, I deal with a couple of other vendors here in North Carolina, and plastics, actually, clean plastic is a thing that one of them, some of them actually want, as long as it's, you know, the ones and twos, and no contaminated oil kind of containers and those kind of things, rigid plastics. And again, of course, they're also banned by the state of North Carolina to go into the landfill. You're not supposed to landfill anything with a plastic container.
So it has to be burned, then? Those have to be burned? If they can't go in the landfill, and they can't be recycled, what's the alternative?
They shred them up.
Shred them.
Shred them up, and then they can landfill them. And there's an incinerator in Virginia Beach. I have commercial customers on the other side of the state that have zero waste goals, that pay us to haul everything to the incinerator. That way, there's zero landfill. But they make steam, so that's.
And I was told, again, during my studies, that there's an incinerator in North Carolina down toward Wilmington? No?
No. Wilmington had one, but it was way too expensive to refit, so they just scuttled the plan. Yes, sir. Closest one to here would be in the Virginia area, the Norfolk area.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, there's also an article out, "The Era of Easing Recycling May Be Coming to an End." And pretty much what they're saying in this is that the more recyclables that we'll have, the less recyclable it's gonna happen. I would ask you to read that article. It's been, actually, they did a program, I believe it was on 60 Minutes, and they went into it also.
I'll probably say one thing. It's so beneficial that we do have these 95-gallon containers, and reference it, they're small. Because I notice myself, like, commissioned, sent a few minutes ago, that whenever I put my garbage out on the side of my house, I put two cement blocks on there. When I get in the morning, it's torn off. So a cat can't do it, a dog can't do it, so I don't know what's going on in your yard.
You got a bear.
But now, I'm having to worry about it, because I'm gonna lock the container up. But I'd just like to say this here, it's a good thing that something's better than nothing. And I know that a lot of people can't afford the $75 a year, but it references $54. Because a lot of people can't pay so much, because they don't fix the income, especially a lot of seniors, and even younger people. So I think it's a good idea that we're doing, and I believe I'm gonna support it.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. Just for everyone's application, can you describe what happens at Waste Industries when all these truckloads of recyclables get to the facility in Jacksonville, and they get sorted somehow and shipped somewhere, somehow? Could you explain that process?
If we be able to, we love to arrange visits and tours. The larger facility in Raleigh, they're set up for tours all the time, and you can see, I mean, it's, the complex is huge. There are bells and whistles and blowers and conveyor belts. I mean, it's very, it's a huge process. We take the materials to Jacksonville, and it's a rather large facility. They semi-sort everything, and then everything goes to Raleigh for a secondary sort. So, but I just wanted to make one comment about plastic bottles. You know what plastic bottles are made of? It's petroleum. So when the, when gas goes up, the bottles become more valuable to, for secondary markets. So everything is checks and balances, and how the economy's doing, and that kind of thing. So just like to throw that out there as well.
So it goes from, so it goes to Jacksonville for semi-sort?
Yes, ma'am.
Goes to the big facility in Raleigh?
Right.
Is that just statewide, or multiple states?
Actually, there's a facility in Wilmington that's like Jacksonville. They both feed the main one in Raleigh. And it's really just this eastern North Carolina area that feeds it. They have a new buzzword, and the recycle word is MRF shed. I know Rusty's heard the word MRF shed. It's kind of like all the tributary towns and counties that feed the local river, being the bigger MRF. And so the MRF shed around here includes Craven County to go to Jacksonville, but.
And MRF means?
To your recycle facility.
Thank you. Okay. So MRF shed is the bigger one, and then from Raleigh, it goes?
It goes to wherever it goes to be.
All sorts of places.
All sorts of places.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
One other last question, I'm sorry.
Go for it.
I was, I think it's my last question.
Sorry.
I was told by someone that when we put plastic into the container, if it is recycled, and again, this article says most of it isn't, that it cannot be reused for any food or drink products. Is that correct?
For the plastic. I think most of the recycled plastic go into toys and other kinds of things. And so rather than a reuse for, because of the FDA.
Yeah. So if we throw a plastic bottle in, it's not coming back as a plastic bottle? It's gonna go into a toy, or into a plastic like this, or some kind of?
Yes, or something other, that something else is manufactured, and that's not food-oriented. And, you know, in a lot of other states, if you've been reading the articles, everybody's starting the bottle bills now across the United States. Where they, back when we were kids, we'd take the bottles back to the store and get, you know, reimbursed for them. There's all kinds of different ways, if you start reading these articles across the United States. And of course, we're in the South. Landfill spaces, we're still very, have a whole lot of it here in the South. So the difference in the price to landfill it versus recycle it is different. I mean, it's less. When you go past Virginia, Maryland up there, you're looking at $150, $200. So they, it's a whole different scenario. And it's all economics, every bit of it, yes.
Yeah. Rhode Island doesn't want to put stuff in a landfill. They don't have any space.
They don't have any space. You know, when you have to pay a hundred, when you have to train it somewhere, train cars, I mean, it's, so.
Yeah. The last thing I'm gonna say, it's not a question. This last sentence of this article says, "The collect, sort, export model with some domestic manufacturing worked for us for a long time, when markets for recycled materials were good, particularly in China. But that's no longer the case, and probably never will be the case again." Not one man's opinion, but that's what they conclude. I'm done.
I got one question for God, Mr. Chairman. What happened if the contractors, if people, residents live off a dirt road, how can they get their trash can to the highway?
How do we do it?
They're gonna come up.
We do, it'd be, we would travel the same exact roads that we travel now. So if we're going down that dirt road now to get it, we would still go down the dirt road. You have to remember, those trucks are huge, and we can't just turn anywhere. And so we'd have to be able, it has to be a road that's traveled, that with nothing hanging on the sides. But if we're going there now, Mr. McKay will go down there to get the trashcans as well.
Commissioner McKay, and just to be clear, over the 25 years you've worked out, we've worked out a lot of these scenarios. I mean, there are some that are just impossible for her truck to get down.
True.
And there's, there's workarounds, you can get to it. But based on the decision you make's not gonna change so much availability.
Because I know somebody asked me a question, why can't they come take my trash up? I might tell them. So that's what I wanna know.
Because they can't get the truck to them.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
That's it for me.
Mr. Chairman, can I make two clarifying comments?
No.
Okay.
My turn.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I wanna follow up on some things that you made here. I wanna go back first to the municipalities that's dealing with you. Whatever we decide here today, whatever deal you work out with them that comes back in lower, are we going to get the same deal?
You have to understand, for example, in a city like New Bern, our trucks can pick up 100 carts an hour, or 100 bins an hour. You average, or better than that, maybe, you average in all the rural areas of the county, that's what drives the price up some. So in reality, your price is better, because they're in the deal. With them going out of the deal, even though they will honor your price, I can't lower your price, because in reality, it's gonna cost us more money.
Okay. Let's go back to another question. Can a large subdivision, or a large housing development, say for Greenbrier, can they deal with you to work their own contract at a lower price, since the density is that? And then how is that going to work, if that's available? I know we've asked you for that, but it's not until 15 May, and it puts you behind the ball, puts us way behind the ball.
If the county votes not to have the program anymore, we can work with the homeowners associations. And a lot of it depends on whether or not we're sending them a bill already, which I don't know if we are. If we're picking them up as a, under the county sticker program, that means they're not getting, unless they have subscription service, then we don't send them a bill. So they would, we do homeowners associations all over every state we're in, so that's not a problem. And they would have a better deal if they all got together and said that we were the only ones that can do it, and some other kind of contingencies. It wouldn't be $6, but it would be, it wouldn't be horrible.
Okay. Another thing I heard you say in there, when the manager gave his brief, "Plastic was with Class 1 and Class 2," and you said, "All plastics." So I think that's gonna be confusing out there.
We're not gonna.
You made the statement, "All plastics." We're telling everybody, only it's got the number 1 and 2 on the bottom of the plastic. So what is it?
That's, according to the contract, what we take, is the ones and twos. Having said that, we have not, we tried to work with the county, and if residents have put other plastics in there that the processor would take, we have not argued with anybody. But we advertise only the ones and twos, or the ones like that. If we get the occasional oddball plastic, don't get me wrong, you put a plastic chair in there, it's going out. You get in, I had my neighbor put a tomato cage in her bin the other day. We'll take those things out and stick it to, we're not, we just don't do that, so.
But, and I'm getting into the weeds, and I understand, but I need the public to understand also. Once we go, if we decide, this board decides to go with the 95-gallon container.
Yes, sir.
You're not gonna know that, because if it fits in that container, you're gonna throw it in that truck.
You're absolutely right.
You know? So then that's, you know.
And how we, and how we monitor that is, when the truck gets back, see, the trucks dump in New Bern at our site there, then we load everything in a tractor-trailer and carry it to Jacksonville. So when the truck dumps, if there's a whole lot of mess in it, we can isolate that neighborhood. Where did that truck go today? And we can always come back and do some education for the neighborhood if we had to.
Okay. Then that goes back to another one that you just opened up.
Okay.
From her question, you said you picked it up and took it to Jacksonville to sort, and then to Raleigh. Now you're saying you're picking it up and sorting it from someplace here?
We're not sorting it any, at all, here. But we're combining the loads from the trucks at the end of the day. It's cheaper for us to combine the loads with the materials at the end of the day, load it into a tractor-trailer, and then haul it to Jacksonville in the tractor-trailer. So walk in for trailer, the materials walk out.
But again, you're sorting it some, because you just said you're pulling some stuff out.
Well, if we see a dead deer head or something, you know, we're, trust me, we don't touch a lot of it, you know?
Okay. Thank you. All right, Mr. Manager, sorry.
Thank you, sir. I actually added two things, since you didn't let me speak earlier. Sorry about that. Start with just a couple of things to think as you make the decision. Let me just go back to those there, so we know what we're talking about. And Norm, while you're here, I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, but if you choose to go with the 95-gallon container, or the 64-gallon container, it's gonna be the materials that fit in that container only. It's not gonna be a bag beside it. It's not gonna be a green box beside it. They're gonna pick that one container up, because that's the way the truck will be modified, to only pick that type of canister up. Norma, you correct me there, or is that what we're talking?
That's absolutely correct. And the reason why is, there's a different kind of truck that picks up those carts. It's automated than the ones that we pick up the bins with. They have the arms, the driver doesn't get out whatever's in the cart. If we provide carts, that's $2.5 million worth of carts that we're gonna have to provide. So in the trucks, even though we don't have to get as many trucks, they're still $340,000 apiece, but the driver doesn't get out. And the reason why that is, is because we want him to stay safe. Anytime anybody gets out of the truck, it's a less safe environment than it is when they get out. And that's the reason why.
Mr. Chairman, if the, wait, wait, wait.
Yes, sir. Also want to make you aware, if you do choose a monthly service, there is a lead time on that. I mean, she just referenced the amount of carts she's gonna have to order, the trucks she's gonna have to order. We have worked with Waste Industries. You know, we're gonna, we'll start the new program when we're comfortable, when we have a mutual agreement that the routes are right, the education's been done. So what that means is, the current program would continue for some period of time. The fee you'd have to set, basically, the fee would change, but the program would stay the same. And then when everything's right, we would flip the switch. So it's not gonna be a July 1st switch date, just to let the board know that. And that's gonna be, we've agreed, that'd be a dual agreement from both agencies there. If you choose an option today, and you don't wanna dive into what fee structure you're looking for, that has to be done during the budget. You can take time to figure that out. It can be done, you know, as late as when you approve your budget, but it has to be in the budget, because that's how we pay for the service. And you'd also be covered under a public hearing for the budget, because it would be a financial addition. And lastly, you know, one thing that I don't want to leave, and I should've said before I started my presentation, there's only one program like Craven County's that exists in the state of North Carolina, and it's this one. We are the only county that treats curbside recycling like this. There are other counties that do curbside recycling, very few of them in North Carolina. But we're the only one that bids it separately, not included in a total solid waste package, not a subscription service like Dare County or Currituck County, where the citizen, you know, the model we looked at has to go to. We are unique as the only county that treats it this way. And, you know, it's one of those programs that, because you have a sticker program, this was the counterpart to it when it was created. You're gonna do stickers, you're gonna have a volume-based trash service. The way you make it cheaper for the citizens is to pull stuff out of the can, because you offer the service. The balance here is, when the fee goes up, what makes it difficult, is it still attainable? Is it still, is the juice worth the squeeze still? You know? Is that fee, what you're pulling out of the can, still worth what you gotta pay for recycling? So that was the point I wanted to make earlier. When they created this program, it was unique, and it has stayed unique. No one has copied it in, obviously, 25 years, so.
Well, if I can, if you, everybody was here, and most likely, everybody was here in the early '90s when we started this program, if you can remember outside, we had pickets out here trying to hang the board that was here, because they was gonna put the $36 and make you recycle. So now, we're gonna, we're gonna cost you more, and everybody wants. And so we, the previous boards, way before our time, when I was here in that time frame, when the pickets were here, and everybody was upset, "You're gonna put $36 and make me recycle?" You know where you can go. Mr. Commissioner?
This might sound crazy, but you got one man in a truck, correct?
Yes, sir, an automated truck.
Okay. When you bring that 95-gallon container out, you got to certain situation, how can you pick it up?
Just like it does the garbage.
You have to get out of the truck?
No, you don't.
Oh.
No, no.
There's a lift. No, 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 you misunderstand me. If I bring my lift out all kind of ways, how you can get to it?
We, we'll tell you which way to put it.
Okay. Have to educate me, I have to tell them. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I know, the city may pick up trash at my place. Sometimes, the truck that comes by my place, sometimes it's not working right. So what they'll do, they'll put another extra person on there to be able to pick it up, because the hooks or something else on the other truck won't work. They got it in the shop.
That's understandable.
So they'll, they'll make, rearrange, they'll rearrange the pickup, if the other truck that come to your place has broken down, and they'll have it fixed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any, any other comments, any concerns? All right, based on? I have one comment.
All right.
When we decided on this, and I voted for us having it picked up, going to the recycling, I did it, I voted on one reason, that according to the county manager, you would be willing to do it on a subscription basis to the different communities. Now, Fairfield Harbor, Quail Woods, all those communities off Broad Creek Road are very much into recycling. And that was the reason that I went for it. And that's why, now you're saying you will do it on a subscription basis?
What we told Mr. White was, we would do subscription basis, but there's some outlying area. some outlying areas we can't get but one or two people. We just can't go that far out just to pick up one or two people. But you're looking more around the Coast City, Dover, I mean, when they're, everybody's so far and few between. They would be the only areas. And that was one of the reasons why you started the program. Nobody would go out to these little interlands to begin because I was here when it started too. And, but that would be the only people we couldn't do subscription for.
Okay, all right. One last chance.
That's it.
Okay.
Be happy.
Entertainer motion.
So, move.
Please, please explain which proposal you're looking for and make the motion, if this is what your motion is, the understanding that the cost, depending on which one you're going to go with, is in that range that will be discerned, will be decided at budget session, budget workshop session.
Is that proposal number four?
I don't know what you're proposing.
Mr. Commissioner McCabe, are you going?
Are you going? Are you going to say something? Oh, no, no, I want to make sure everybody's on the right page here.
Okay, so you're withdrawing your motion? You don't have a motion?
No, I have a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we institute proposal number four, which is monthly pickup with a 95-gallon container.
I would second that motion.
Okay, let's make sure I understand this. You want a motion to approve proposal number four on a monthly 95 gallons with the understanding that the cost to the general public will be somewhere as between 56 and 60 based on the meeting at the budget workshop. Is that, is that what I understand?
That is correct.
That's your second?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, what?
Mr. Chairman, can we have discussion on?
Yes, sir, okay. Yes, sir.
I, I think it behooves us to. At our last meeting, I began my comments by stating just what you, you just said just a few minutes ago, is that when this current program was instated, it was very controversial. Not trying to be redundant, Grandaddy sat on this board. I said last time that his yard was full of trash. I lived with him because people were mad about having a fee put on them of a service that they knew nothing about. Grandaddy told me through the years after he got off of this board that it, that was the most controversial issue that ever came before him as a commissioner on this board was recycling and trash. We used to have the old green trash boxes and you went and throwed everything you had in those boxes. And, and so, they did away with them, went to the sticker program and then went to the recycling program. And that was a great change for people in this county. Just as it was controversial 25-plus years ago, is still a controversial issue today. Vice Chairman Mark and myself, and I, I point you out, Vice Chairman, because both of us represent districts that have the urban and the rural divide. As we have found out, as I found out, and I believe he has too in the last few days, that the vast majority of, of our citizens that live here in the urban areas of this county utilize the recycling program. I'd say, and I, and I thank the citizens from Greenbrier and Deerfield and other communities that have voiced their opinions to me. I've literally received over hundreds of emails, calls and so forth from folks. If I had to estimate, and this is my calculation, I'd say 85% plus probably here in the urban areas utilize the recycling program. On the flip side of that, if you get out into the rural areas, I've been criticized and fussed at Jason Jones, "If you increase this fee on me, I don't use it, I don't want it." A, a big majority, I didn't say all, but a big majority of the rural folks, they don't utilize it. They don't see the need of it. Some utilize our convenience sites, some just don't recycle. Whether that's good or bad, you know, just as those that recycle, we have that right. Others pay the fee present and they have. To those that have called me and they have been civil, thank you. I appreciate the communication that you give. There's been some that haven't been so civil, that's your right. But I do appreciate those that call and, and talk with a polite voice and polite email. It means a lot to be able to hear from folks like that rather than some that cuss you out. And I've had a lot of that this week. I'm not used to that. I won't raise that way. And I, I try not to do that in my own life. But that's, as I said, that's a person's right. This county has engaged in clean sweep. Pat Sager is right in the back row there. She has worked tirelessly and I give you a hand for all that you've done to help with clean sweep. This county has invested, started to try to invest money into our clean sweep program. In our last budget, we initiated a part-time person to go out and do roadside pickup. I think that's been very well. We've got folks that sit in the runway that has called me and want that on their roads. We, we want to see our roads clean. There is a great concern that this recycling, if we cease it in its current form, that we will see more trash on our roadways. That is probably true.
That's right.
It probably will. The reality of whatever decision this board comes to though, there's going to be citizens who are upset. As I said, there's some who don't want to pay the recycling fee at all, some who don't want to see it double, and there are some who are willing to see it double and pay it. When I cast my vote at our last meeting, I did so because most everywhere I go to speak or I meet with citizens, one of the first things that people always come up to me and say to me is, "Jason Jones, I don't want my taxes raised. I don't want my taxes raised. I want smaller government, less intrusion, and I don't want you to raise my taxes." I don't care where I go, I hear that. And so, when I cast my vote at our last meeting, I think I did so along with a lot of my colleagues with that mentality. I still believe that that is what most of our citizens desire in this county, but from the discussions that have been had this week, I think our citizens, a, a good majority of them, I didn't say all, are willing to pay for services that they truly believe in. And I'll say that again, they're willing to pay for services that they believe in. This Board of Commissioners is faced with the upcoming budget that's going to see a tremendous reduction in property tax base, values, the reduction of that. We're faced with many areas of government that have come in that have greater needs. We don't know what this budget's going to look like yet. It hadn't been presented to us, but we all know, we pretty sure it's going to be a very challenging budget. My concern is how challenging it's going to be. Is it going to be to the extent that to keep things currently like they are, that we have to raise taxes? I don't know that today. To provide for the services that you want. To go raise taxes in the same year that we go and, and potentially, this hasn't been voted on, but if you went with another proposal to double the fee, there's a lot of people that don't want that. I'll, I'll sum this up, now thank you for giving me the time, but I think that folks need to understand that it's not our desire. I apologize as a representative of the people, if, if you feel like that I have not served you to the best of my ability to bring this before you before I voted on it. There had been discussions, but I went back to the early 1990s when this board got criticized as they did for implementing this fee because I lived through it. Grandaddy, he, he, he even had somebody had a coffin out here in the front and put his name on it for raising taxes. That's how bad it was. He had people go and put nails in his driveway and so all our family, when we're coming out of the driveway, tires got flat. That's how bad that time was. And if you weren't here during that time, you don't realize it, but I was. I experienced it firsthand. That's how emotional that time was. And I didn't want to see us go through that again by doubling this fee on the people. But the folks, I represent rural and urban. I represent all of District Two and the majority of the folks that have called me do desire for this recycling program. Again, any decision that I make is not going to make everybody happy, but I think I will reverse my decision that I made because of those that have called me and contacted me. And I believe, again, proposal four is not going to make everybody happy, but I believe that it does not double the fee. It does not double the fee. It keeps the program intact.
That's right.
And we can move forward. If a person desires to recycle more than that 95-gallon, then we have convenience sites that we spend over a million dollars a year on that folks can take and utilize. I know people desire maybe more than that, but I think we have to compromise in, in the middle. And compromise has become increasingly difficult for more, many of our leaders today. There are some issues that I'm not going to compromise on, but I think this is one today that I'm willing to find common ground on. And that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Any?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
I'd just like to say that I'm concerned about the cleanliness of the entire county. And I know that a lot of our volunteers has decided that they will go about cleaning up different areas. And I'd just like to say that we had some volunteers over there in Duffield who have committed, that said they were on May there, second through the fourth, they're going to clean up the community. And the city is going to put bins out there to take up the trash in the community of people having the backyard. The only thing that they're not picking up, they're not picking up bags and tires. So, we, and also the sheriff department are going to be working along with us, cleaning up the community because we all believe in a clean community. Now, some areas we, we put a stigma on, say, where they, those people in that area don't want to do anything, they'll let trash be everywhere. Now, being aware that we have other people coming through that throwing out trash, we have dogs coming over, they're turning over the bins and the trash flying all around, but working together, I feel like we can do all things and we have to work together. If we don't work together, then we're responsible for what happens. And I know what some people can't do as well as other people, and then we have to take up the slack to help other people. So, I feel, I feel good about this, the proposal that we're thinking about right now because I'm, I'm sure that other people, it's a lot of people that they, that can't, don't have the transportation to take their waste out to a station that we have set up. So, we're going to have to have someone to go in and pick up these bins in other areas. So, I'm on board. Thanks.
Mr. Baron, you have something, sir?
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm okay.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion on the table. Does everyone understand the motion?
He withdraws the motion.
Commissioner? Commissioner Liner? Okay. I'm going to state the motion for the board to adjourn. The motion is to contract with Waste Industries for $4.50 per household on monthly service with a 95-gallon container.
With the understanding it will be between $56 and $60, decided at budget time.
Yes, sir.
Does everybody understand that motion?
Mm-hmm.
Madam Park, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Okay, any other?
That's it.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to second. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.